Time to call to order the meeting of Monday, August 28th for the Village of Payless Park. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan?
Here.
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Present.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
And Mayor Milovich Walters.
Present, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask for approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting on August 14th. Are there any changes or additions? If not, I seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion in the second, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes. Moving on to recognition, proclamations, appointments, and presentations. Item A, to appoint Ross Chibi to Sergeant of the Payless Park Police Department and to be sworn in by Commissioner Polk, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Why don't you meet me at the podium, Ross? Whoa. I'm out of the closet? Our little boy is growing up. So, I have the honor and the privilege today to tell you a little bit about Ross Chibi and his promotion to patrol sergeant. Consider the most challenging role in law enforcement today. A patrol sergeant is not only tasked with supervising fellow officers, but helping to inspire, train, and mentor them. Investigator Ross Chibi has served in many roles in law enforcement over eighteen years, beginning with being a police cadet when he was fourteen years old. The list of Ross's roles within Payless Park includes the sports service clerk, both part-time officer and full-time officer, as well as many specialty roles. In addition to serving as a Payless Park Police Cadet, Community Service Officer, and Desk Officer when he was a wee child, Ross has overseen the Payless Park Police Cadet Program for many years. It's hard to believe he's overseen anything for many years. Ross is a graduate of Lewis University with a bachelor's in criminal social justice and has an additional associate degree from Marin Valley Community College. He holds specialties as an evidence technician, juvenile officer, lead homicide investigator, and Internet Crimes Against Children. Ross has also served as a field training officer, eventually assuming the leadership of our field training program. In addition, he's served as our department's primary criminal investigator, serving on the FBI South Orland Park File Task Force and the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System Mobile Field Force Response Team. Say that three times now. Ross works with several agencies on various other task forces, Southwest Major Crimes, Southwest Major Case, Fifth District Detective Group, the United States Department of Justice, Internet Crimes Against Children, and the Task Force under the direction of Cook County State's Office. In 2022, the Payless Lions Club awarded Ross their first responder award recipient, as they recognized him as truly a top cop, noting, "Officer Ross Chibi's dedication as an officer and investigator is the model of a professional, working every single sensitive case, one at a time, with the victim, suspect, and state's attorneys. He goes above and beyond his responsibilities, making certain each case gets the attention to detail in excellence. Through his passion, work ethic, moral integrity, and willingness to help others, Ross Chibi embodies the mission and values of the Payless Park Police Department. He's a leader, making our community safer for everyone." So pursuant to the Village Payless Park Code and the Payless Park Police Policy, Investigator Ross Chibi is now going to be promoted to the position of Sergeant of Police, holding the rank of Sergeant of Police, Village of Payless Park Police Department. And here's the ultimatum. Would you please raise your right hand? Repeat after me. I, Ross Chibi?
I, Ross Chibi.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And uphold and enforce the ordinances and statutes?
And uphold and enforce the ordinances and statutes.
Of the Village of Payless Park?
Of the Village of Payless Park.
Cook County, Illinois?
Cook County, Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Sergeant of the Payless Park Police Department?
The duties of Sergeant of the Payless Park Police Department.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ross, I give you your badge and my heartfelt thanks and congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it. (applause) I would like to start by thanking Mayor Milovich Walters, Commissioner Polk, and the Village Council for this opportunity. I'd also like to thank Chief Miller, Mayor Hughes, for placing their trust in me to help lead the members of the Payless Park Police Department as we continue to endeavor to provide the best and most professional service possible to the residents of this village. These two men, along with retired Sergeant Diana Campbell and retired Commander John Sawyer, have taught me the true meaning of my favorite day quote, "Leadership and learning are indispensable to each other." And I know I have many things to learn. A retired Chicago Police Lieutenant recently stated that one of the primary responsibilities of police supervisors is to take care of our officers and treat them the way that we deserve. To the men and women of the Payless Park Police Department, I pledge to continue to strive to provide you with the best leadership direction and support I can in these times. As the police profession continues to evolve, I'm confident that we will meet each challenge. Let's always remember that our ultimate responsibility is to the nine women that we have sworn to serve with. Lastly, I would like to thank my loved ones, including my four dogs, of course. And in closing, I would like to quote General Douglas MacArthur, who said, "A true leader has the confidence to stand alone and the courage to make tough decisions and the compassion to listen to the needs of others. He does not set out to be a leader, but becomes one by the quality of his actions and the integrity of his intent." Thank you guys very much. Ladies and gentlemen.
(applause)
Sergeant Chibi, thank you so much for all your years dedicated here to the Village of Payless Park, and thank you for all these other officers that have come here to support you. It really shows what a family and team and how close you guys all work together and support each other. So, thank you, and I wish you the best in this new venture for you.
Thank you.
All right, well.
Feel free to stay, but I believe that the sergeant may be buying drinks at some point. Thank you, gentlemen.
Unless we can't miss the next appointment proclamation, because, you know, this guy could be one of you very shortly here. Recognition and proclamation B is a presentation of the Mayor John F. Mahoney Police Cadet Explorer Scholarship, and this is going to Payless Park Police Cadet Community Service Officer, Costadinos Nomicos.
Come on up, John. So, if you can get a bat out of here. So, the Payless Park Police Cadet Scholarship has been renamed the Mayor John F. Mahoney Police Cadet Explorer Scholarship. This scholarship is presented to Costadinos Nomicos, a lifelong Orland Park resident who attended Greek Elementary School and then attended Chicago Christian High, where he had the opportunity for an internship with the Payless Park Police Department. This academic partnership program offers high school and college seniors the opportunity to spend a semester working in a public safety agency. Interns spend a semester working with our staff in patrol, administration, and investigation, in a good student's direction on one career path they might want to pursue. From his internship program, this gentleman became a member of the Payless Park Cadet Program and became a Payless Park Community Service Officer, where he's been serving for the last three years. At the retirement recognition of Mayor John Mahoney in May this year, I announced that the Payless Park Police Cadet Program Scholarship would be renamed the Mayor John F. Mahoney Police Cadet Explorer Scholarship. It's awarded to Payless Park Law Enforcement Explorers, the cadets who've committed to the Police Cadet Program for over one year. They receive financial assistance via scholarship to help offset the costs of their college education, as long as their major has an emphasis on public or social service. As Mayor Mahoney force, we seek out those who've committed and dedicated to the lives of public service. We work to honor their service with a small token to help separate their college costs. The scholarship is funded by donations to support the Payless Park Police Cadet Program. Our cadet program is an educational program for young men and women to provide experiences to help them mature and prepare them to become responsible and caring adults. I'd like to award the Mayor John F. Mahoney Police Cadet Scholarship to Costadinos Nomicos to help in pursuit of your public service-focused degree. Congratulations. (applause) If you have a chance, maybe a smaller one, bring it to the bank. Read that to your mom. She'll be very happy.
I will. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Lots of awards. Now moving on to some appointments. To appoint Nicholas Karas, Attorney at Law, as the Village Prosecutor for the Village's Administrative Adjudication for the Circuit Court hearings at the Fifth District Courthouse in Bridgeview. There's a desire to consolidate certain prosecution functions with one attorney for the village. Over the past several years, Attorney Nick Karas has represented the Village of Payless Park as its prosecutor for our monthly administrative adjudication hearings held here at the Capter Center. A consolidation of functions can occur by adding Attorney Karas as the Village Prosecutor for the Village's regular monthly call in Circuit Court at the Fifth District Courthouse in Bridgeview. This appointment will not affect the appointment of the municipal attorneys. The council reappointed Klein, Thorpe, and Jenkins as its municipal attorney at the May 8th, 2023 meeting. The engagement letter between Attorney Karas and the Village of Payless Park would be for the Prosecution Services at the Payless Park Administrative Adjudication Hearings and Matters Heard at the Bridgeview Courthouse. Other legal matters would continue to be handled by the attorneys at Klein, Thorpe, Jenkins. Anybody have any questions? If not, I seek a motion to appoint Nick Karas.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion in a second, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes. And the next appointment is Adrian Jakew to our Newcomers Welcoming Ad-Hoc Committee. Adrian completed the online committee application form and expressed her willingness to help new families who move into the area transition to living and thriving in Payless Park. Her skills as a human resources manager of twenty years and volunteer experience will be a huge asset to this committee, and I seek a motion to appoint Adrian Jakew to the Newcomers Welcoming Ad-Hoc Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes. We have no hearings. Moving on to the consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are routine and have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, to approve payment of invoices on the warrant list dated August 28th, 2023 in the amount of $362,877.27. Seek a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes. Old business, does anybody have any? Moving on, we do not have any board commission committee recommendations, so moving on to information and updates, Public Works and Street and Recreation Report, Commissioner Patan?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening for the Public Works, back early August of this month, one of the Old Creek Lift Station sewage pumps was not running properly. So the pump was pulled and replaced with a spare pump for that station. Unfortunately, the pump that was removed could not be repaired. So the Public Works would like to purchase a new hydromatic pump to replace the damaged one. Since this is a Metropolitan Industry Station, Public Works asked for a quote on the replacement pump. The price to replace the pump is $15,341, and there is money in the sewer fund budget for the pump replacement. So the staff recommends approving the proposal from Metropolitan Industries, and I will move to approve the proposal from Metropolitan Industries in the amount of $15,341 to purchase a new sewage pump for the Old Creek Lift Station.
I'll second that.
Anybody have any questions?
That include installation, or are we installing it?
That is a good question, Commissioner. I don't know.
Okay, fair enough. Sorry.
And moving on to Recreation?
Wait, 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 we have to take the vote. They're installing it.
Okay.
Okay. Could we call the roll, please?
Staller, do one. Yes, staller, okay.
Okay, Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes, motion carries.
Moving on to Recreation, we're still looking for parade participants for our Autumn in the Park, which would be Saturday, September 16th. If you are interested in joining the parade, if you're a local business or anyone, please call TMI at the Village at 708-671-3721. Also, the playground, if you haven't seen, has been installed. It looks wonderful, looks amazing, but we're still waiting on a few minor little details with the path, so pretty soon it will be open for our kiddos to play on.
Very exciting. I'm so happy to see how it's come so far, and I can't wait for them to finish.
It's your baby. Be good.
You've taken great lead with it, so thank you so much.
That's all for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Moving on to Building and Public Property Report, Commissioner Wade?
Thank you. Real quick, if you hire landscapers to work on your house this spring or summer, please remember that they need to be registered with the Village of Payless Park. Two-page contract or registration forms to be filled out, certificate of insurance submitted, as well as registration fee paid. Thank you for registering to work in the village. If you need assistance with the contract or registration process, please call us at On the permit department, the building department processed seventeen permits from August 8th to August 23rd, 2023, resulting in $8,950 in permit fees, bringing our fiscal year to date to $62,847.33. And I do have one item for us to consider tonight. This agenda matter deals with a referral to the Plan Commission to hold a public hearing regarding potential text amendments to the village zoning regulations. A little bit of background, the village is continually reviewing and updating its code, including the zoning regulations found therein. Village Council has requested an overall review and update of the zoning regulations section of the code, and that review and study is underway. As part of this overall review, Chapter 1274, dealing with business district regulations, specifically Section 1274, Spot 02A, dealing with B1 limited business district permitted uses, and Section 1274, Spot 03A, dealing with B2 general retail and wholesale business district permitted uses, as well as Chapter 1278, special uses, Section 1278, Spot 02, permitted uses, council authority, will be studied with any modifications being recommended to the Village Council by its Plan Commission. This agenda item is just to allow a public hearing with the Plan Commission, review the permitted uses in the business district and the special uses in the village, so just more of a review of anything else for them to kind of clean it up for us. So, are there any questions? If there are no questions, I move to refer the matter of the potential text amendments to Chapter 1274, Sections 1274, Spot 02A, and 1274, Spot 03A, and Chapter 1278, Section 1278, Spot 02, of the village code to the Plan Commission for a public hearing and recommendations to the Village Council.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, if there is no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes, thank you. Anything further, Commissioner Wade?
No, that is it for me.
Excellent. Moving on to Public Health and Safety Report, Commissioner Polk?
Thank you, Mayor Milovich Walters. We'll start with the police activity report from the 14th of August through the 27th of August of the year of our Lord 2023. We had 1,929 calls for service, so right around the average of about a thousand a week. Took an additional 29 citizen assist calls, 23 case reports, and 14 accident reports. Arrested an adult, fortunately no juvenile arrests, impounded no vehicles, 88 traffic stops with 36 moving violations, 16 adjudication tickets, 59 speeding tickets, and 25 parking violations. So that's what the Village of Payless Park Police Department's been up to over the last couple of weeks. And then I just have a couple of quick announcements. Again, we're concerned about trying to keep people on the right side of scams and prying your precious dollars away from you, so we've had some issues over the last couple of weeks. We just want people to be aware. Buying items as secondhand is a terrific practice, but you have to be careful that you don't buy property that's not stolen or not theirs. Use caution when somebody approaches you offering to sell you something, particularly on social media. These criminals take advantage of people who are searching for great deals, so you have a social media account and you put those magic three letters ISO, I'm searching or in search of. It's not unusual for somebody who's not on the straight and narrow to pick that up and make you an offer that they have, just the item that you're looking for, and they're willing to sell you at a fire sale price, because, and then you fill in the blank about why they want to get rid of it. Deal of a lifetime, they're selling it for a friend, the friend's not available, the deal is too good to be true, as my mother said, it probably isn't true. Wise and do your due diligence. So we work with the Payless Park Police Department and work with Chicago Police to return a stolen bicycle that was taken from North Ashland in Chicago after a third party purchased the bike from another person. So again, you should do your best to know your seller. Ask them if this is yours to sell. Don't take their word for it. You don't want to be seen as insulting, so sometimes you don't ask these sort of probing questions. Asking doesn't necessarily mean you'll get a truthful answer, but it gives you a better sense of the situation. Best of all, trust your instincts. Check the item for any identifying markers. Are they actually linked to the person who's selling the item? Do they have all the stuff that you need in order to be able to make the item work? Cords, remotes, locks, keys, cases, passwords? And verify to the best of your ability the person that is attempting to sell you something is actually the owner. If they tell you that that person, that they don't own it, but they're selling it for someone else, ask for the name and contact information for that person and contact them. Again, an ounce prevention's worth a pound of grief here. I'd also like to remind people that all of the parking lot to the south that side of the Capter Center is monitored, video monitored, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So if you're considering doing a transaction with somebody that you don't necessarily want to go to their home, or what they say is their home, or meet in some other spot, that would be a terrific spot, and you would have access to the video should something go wrong. So again, if you have a deal and it's too good to be true, it probably isn't true. And then, school's back in town, kids are back in school, so I just wanted to take a minute and talk a little bit about a couple of things about school buses. So first, I want to warn you that officers could be riding on buses to witness violators and radio ahead to patrol cars to ticket those drivers. Well, our officers will also be enforcing the school bus laws. There are some key rules of the road regarding school buses. So first, be on the lookout for kids at bus stops. Put down the phone. Shouldn't be talking on the phone when you're driving anyway, but you face a particularly stiff fine for using a phone in a school zone. Please don't park where you shouldn't. If the signs say don't park, and you park, we're going to ask you to move, and if you don't move, you will be ticketed. Buckle up. Everybody in the car should be in a child seat, a booster seat, or on a seatbelt. Be on the lookout for school zone signals and obey the speed limits, which are usually pretty low. When entering a school zone, slow down, stop for school buses that are loading or unloading children. Watch out for the school crossing guards. Never pass other vehicles while driving in a school zone. Never text or use your phone in a school zone. On a two-lane road, all lanes of traffic in both directions have to stop when a school bus is stopped with its stop arm out. On a one-lane road, it's the same law. So if you're on a four-lane road that's divided, then if the school bus is in the other lane of traffic, the oncoming lane of traffic, you don't have to stop, but certainly be cautious. Kids could be crossing the street or running out from the bus. So again, school bus drivers can report a license plate number to the police. If that happens, the violator or owner of the car is required to tell police who was driving, or they face those charges themselves. Drivers convicted of school bus violations face fines of $300 for the first time and $1,000 for repeat offenders. And the Illinois Secretary of State will suspend your license for repeat offenders. School zones have serious laws as well. Speed limit in a school zone is 20, two zero, miles an hour, from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM on school days. Again, motorists cannot pass another car in a school zone, and pedestrians always have the right of way. So again, the kids are back in school, please be careful. We haven't had school buses around for a couple of months, but they're back, and we want you all to be aware of that fact. Chief Miller?
Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you much for your service, sir. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk. Moving on to Accounts and Finances, Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. We have nothing for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. And the mayor's report, I have nothing this evening. Clerk Aragoni?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. And Manager Bame?
Continue the trend. I have nothing for this evening.
Wow, okay. Busy day. I just have a couple of announcements. I just want to let everyone know, today we held our first meeting of the Newcomers Welcoming Ad-Hoc Committee at the REC Center. It went really well. Nine village residents volunteered to be part of this committee, and I'm very excited to see the ideas and strategies they come up with to welcoming new people moving into Payless Park. I also want to remind you about the Rita Wegley Beautification Award. This is a chance to recognize your neighbors that enhance the village's beauty and charm by nominating them for this award. The form is available on the village website or here at the Capter Center, and we're still accepting nominations up until September 4th. And then, reminder about our new app. Payless Park has an app, and it's called Simplicity. It's a great way to stay up to date with what's happening in the village, all on one app on your phone. There's a video tutorial posted on Facebook and on the village website. If you need assistance downloading the app, you can stop here at the Capter Center, and village staff will help you, but it's very simple. Takes about two minutes, and you'll receive notifications and easy one-click to look up police or when your recycling day is, lots of different things, all in one place. So please download Simplicity, and it's free. And then, just a reminder that the village administrative offices will be closed on Monday, September 4th, in honor of Labor Day. Citizens and visitors, comments period. Would anybody like to address the council? Seeing no take- council? Seeing no takers on that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion in a second, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
And Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes, thank you, and have a good holiday weekend. Be safe. Thank you.